Good evening, everyone. Good evening, and thank you all for coming. Quickly, as we always start every meeting, I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Also, would you join me in a pledge of allegiance from the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, welcome, everyone. There's been a lot of working going on on this agreement, as you will see as we move forward quickly. We need to approve the minutes of January 29th. Discussion. It was a very brief meeting, if you remember correctly. Twelve minutes, to be exact. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Unanimous, Michelle? Okay, PowerPoint presentation. We have three gentlemen with us this evening. We have Steve Hemmey, Mac, and Steve. Excuse me, and Steve. What, Michelle?
Right here. She just said the date should be, say, February 26th.
On the very top of your agenda?
Yeah.
It should say February 26th, meeting 6:30 to 6:00 to 7:30?
That's right.
It should say February 26th. That's just a date correction. That's nothing to do with minutes.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna have a PowerPoint presentation of the assessment formula.
Okay, just have a little prologue here.
Sure.
As we get started. We sent this documentation that you all received to Chris Lynch, who is the person at the Department of Education who has to approve this before it goes to legal and then it goes to the commissioner eventually, but she's the one who is on the ground that really works on it on a day-to-day basis. Chris actually retired about a year ago and has worked two days a week. Ruth has worked with her for 20 years, Christine for 10, and we've all worked with her for a long time. She's excellent. She really knows what she's doing. She has a lot of good advice. Unfortunately, I sent the documentation that you received last Wednesday night to Michelle, I think it was, and on late Thursday afternoon, we got Chris Lynch's suggestions of what things might need some work. So Steve Donovan and I met Friday afternoon, worked on that. We have some suggestions. As you know, tonight, we're going to go through Sections 4, 5, and 6. There are a couple of things that we will mention along the way that Chris has suggested, but we thought the best way to start would be to go through this PowerPoint. Steve is a guru on finances, really knows his stuff, so he can sure answer any of your questions, and this is kind of just setting the stage for us to talk about Sections 4, 5, and 6. Steve?
Steve, thank you.
All right. Thank you. This is the first meeting I've attended, because Mac and Steve are doing it. I'm the Assistant Executive Director for the Regional School Association, head up our consulting group. So I came tonight to go over with you with the assessment to understand it's the statutory assessment that's required by law and Department of Education to follow that. So if we go to the first one. Hold on. I think.
Before we get started, ladies and gentlemen, if you have any questions on the way through, so we don't get ahead of ourselves, hello? Raise your hand. Let's go over it, including anyone who's in the gallery that might have a question, so we can continue on, but still come up with any answers that we may need for anyone. Thank you.
Okay, wanna go to the next one? My clicker is hidden behind there. To explain the statutory method, the state determines minimum required to educate students, does not include transportation, debt, or capital. It's based on enrollment and number economically disadvantaged students, and it's adjusted yearly based on enrollment inflation. So they establish a foundation budget, which is the minimum that is to be required spent in each school district, okay, town or district, and just calculations on that. So we'll go to the next one, please. And what happens is they require, there's a minimum required local contribution based on the property values and the town's income of its residents, and they get that usually about two years behind in doing that, but they calculate that, so it's based on the wealth. The idea is that a community that is wealthy can afford to pay more than a community that's not as wealthy. So again, no matter where a child lives, there's a minimum amount of money spent on them for their education. This goes back to why the Ed reform Act of 93 was passed because of that. Now, Chapter 70, and prior to 93, and then even starting in 2007, they finally, the way it calculates, you calculate your foundation budget, and every district has their own foundation budget based on the, this is based now on students, has nothing to do with the wealth factor at the moment, but the foundation budget based on the students. They have about 12 different categories that they calculate on to come up with it, and again, the foundation budget does not include transportation, regular special ed, and does not include capital or debt. Then they minus the required local contributions, which are calculated by the Department of Revenue, sends that over to the Department of Education, and then that equals the amount of Chapter 70 that you would receive. So we now can calculate how much Chapter 70 you get and why. And that is how the state then can say that they have met their requirement to make sure all children, no matter where they live, receive an appropriate amount of money. The issue, I will tell you, is that very few districts can survive on minimum local contributions on the foundation budget, and you're one of them, and you do spend above that. Next, please. Now, the net school spending, what they, you've heard that before, that is the required local contribution, Chapter 70 added together, and that you must spend every year. That's a requirement. You do spend above that, but that's the amount of requirement. The state says if we're gonna give you Chapter 70, and you got your required local contribution, you need to spend it on education. Okay, next. Now, the statutory assessment is assessed, and it's been court cases and laws now, regulations. So what they take, you take your foundation budget. Remember, it does not include transportation, debt, or capital. You minus your Chapter 70, you minus minimum local contribution, and you can minus other income that you might have to the district, meaning E and D or other types of income that come to the district. That, what they call, equals the amount above the local contribution, and then that amount, whatever it is, is then assessed to the member towns, but you have to define how you're going to assess that. You have a number, and it's District Y for the two towns, and in most cases, and I think it's based on your enrollment, if you have, what's the break?
It's about 60, 40.
Okay, so whatever that amount is, 60 is going to be one district, 40 is gonna be the other district. That's how you do that. It has to be defined in your agreement, and you have to go, we have to define all that in your agreement. Next slide, please. The school committee determines the budget based on the needs of the district, and the budget must be at least hitting the net school spending, and you're above that as it is. And as I'm saying to you, you're not unusual. Most districts are above it. Very few, I mean, very few of the 280 districts are at the net school spending. It's a minimum. It's a foundation minimum that has to be spent. Next. Summary of the assessments that take place is, so you have the minimum required local contribution for each town. You then have the amount over the net school spending, over the foundation budget, then you have transportation, capital, and debt, and you have the assessment of the towns. Now, on your transportation, you have to designate how will that be assessed. That's both special, I'm sorry, special education and regular education, and you take, what happens on that assessment, you take that, those two numbers together, minus the Chapter 71, the reimbursement that you get from the state, and then that amount that you're over, which you will be, you have to assess that to the towns, and that's assessed, I believe, on a per pupil basis. Then you take capital and debt. Capital, meaning any project, sometimes you have projects, districts have projects, they might be, they had to buy a big dump truck that cost $100,000, whatever. They can say, we wanna pay that over two years, three years. That can be in a capital assessment. And then debt, I think, is pretty much, you have debt still on this building, the debt. And again, in your agreement, you have to designate how is that being assessed to the towns. There's no requirement by the state, except you have to designate in your agreement, how do you assess that? And then that, when you add those all together, that'd be the total assessment to the towns. One of the things, working with the department, and we agree, is that you have to really define these things, and in a number of cases, we recommend, especially when you're calculating that, that you have spreadsheets that show that, open spreadsheet that shows where you plug the numbers in. I dare say, in the next 40 years, none of us will be sitting at this table in charge here or even around, and so you wanna make sure the people that come after you know exactly what to do, and there's no question trying to figure it out.
Did you ask me to speak for yourself?
Oh, I speak for myself. I won't be here in 40 years, I guarantee you that one. Well, you never know.
I won't either.
But the issue is that you need to make sure to define it, and I've been in different districts, and they say, oh, this is how we've always done it, or this is what's been done, but it's not written down. So it needs to be, that's clearly all of this in the agreement, so that when the towns vote, they know exactly what they're gonna be voting. Any questions this far?
Yeah, one question. On the town assessment, you said it's 60, 40 now, but that's not a hard figure, that floats.
Every year.
Okay.
What you have to say is that you'll be the student role. Now, the other thing that comes up is a lot of times, and I can't remember what it says in yours, but are the October 1 enrollment.
Yeah.
Now, here's the issue. You have to define what part of the October enrollment are you dealing with, because if you could say, I'm gonna take the foundation budget enrollment, okay, that they give you. Included in that is not only the students that are actually physically in the building, but it's also that you have school choice out. Those children are listed as well in that. And also, I think you're, out of district placement students did. So you just have to decide what enrollment number you're going to use, so there's not a question. Usually, everybody goes back to October 1, but now, when it first came out, it was pretty simple. Now it's much more complicated, so you gotta decide exactly what that number's going to be when you say 60, 40 of what? What's the calculation? So there's no question. All right? Anything on that? Okay, go back, could you go back, any, can we go back one? Yeah. Okay, are there any questions in this? We wanted to clearly understand, and again, it has to be written in the agreement, painstakingly written in the agreement, and the words we use, we have to be careful about when you say enrollment, defining enrollment and so forth, so there's not a question. Okay? We wanna go over one other thing with you. Go ahead, next slide, please. Is that, said that the department develops the foundation for each community. The DOR calculates the amount that you can afford, and the goal is to have no community pay more than 82.5 of its foundation budget. Other words, 17.5 percent, you at least get 17.5 percent. So depending on, I don't, you're not at that point, but some districts east of, in the 128 area, can afford to pay without any money, but at least they're guaranteed to get 17.5 percent of Chapter 78. Next, please. The next thing is they call, we've developed what they call target shares. It's target share. It's the amount that the state has calculated of the minimum local contributions, where should you be to provide for the education? How much money should you be able to pay? Right now, the target share for Whitman is 45.28, but you're at 42.5. Hanson is 54.9, you're actually 50. You can see the differences. So the MLC, the Minimum Local Contribution, will increase incrementally each year to get you to that target share. So that's going to happen over a period of time. You'll see some of the minimum local contributions go up, because you're not at the target shares, if we got that correct. And I would, I'll point out that the region does receive, I think, $14 million over, I'm sorry, 4 million, not 14, 4 million over the chapters, they call it Chapter 78 aid, that you're getting more than you're entitled to if you do strictly by calculation of taking your foundation budget minus your minimum local contributions, and that number, and you're getting 4 million more. Your call, what are called held harmless, they don't reduce it from year to year, they could turn around, the state could do that, but every year, the legislators vote to maintain at least what you had.
Steve, the minimum local contribution, you say it will continue to be increased incrementally each year to get to target share. By who?
The DOR will put that and then send it over to DESE and say, here's what you need to go up by.
I got it. I just want people to understand, you know, we talk these numbers, and we talk the MLC and this and that, but a lot of people watching don't understand, because they don't do it every day. So I'm just trying to define it a little bit.
And what will happen is, they also take into account when you need to increase it, probably two and a half limits, so it's incrementally done, so it's not a big, they understand those limits, but you eventually get to what they feel that you could afford to pay. No. And again, you see, you're close, you're like 3% in one and 4% in other districts, we've seen a lot more percentage-wise, so again, you're getting pretty close to that. We wanted to go over that first with you to understand the, especially when you get into the section on the assessments, that you're gonna be doing, the assessments, and there's gonna be a little bit of a change in some of the things that you've been doing. The department is being pretty insistent on things being calculated a certain way, and as we get to it, I can talk to you more about it.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone have any questions? Everybody get that?
Very clear.
Okay. Chris, you have a question?
No, I'm sorry, that was a...
Oh, sorry. I tried to be cognizant of getting everybody in. Don?
One of the things that we found is that Chris Lynch has some particular interests in wording, and we decided that it doesn't matter to anybody, so we certainly don't fight it, but for, in your regional agreement, there are many places it says the regional school district. Every time that's mentioned, she crossed out regional school. She just likes the word district, so we're not gonna explain that every time we get by one of those, but we've basically eliminated the word school, regional school. So that's just one of her idiosyncrasies that...
Is this something she said was a must?
Right. Yeah, I mean...
Any issues, anyone?
So we...
So the school, moving forward in the agreement, it's going to delete regional school, and it's gonna say the district.
Right.
Okay? Fine.
That's just one of the things, and there are a number of little things like that that we don't, we're not gonna, we will, next time when you get this document, all those changes will be, begin there. So we're going to start with Section 4. If you can scroll down to Section 4, please, Michelle. So our plan is that Steve would read the paragraph, and you, I assume that you're looking at the one that has the blue strikeouts in it, but Steve is just gonna read what we believe should be there or will be there based on your interests. He'll read a paragraph at a time, and if there's anybody who has a question about that, we'll stop and discuss it and make any changes. Michelle said she would, she could make the change right on the fly, if that's the will of the group, and we'll go from there. So start with Section 4.
Okay. Thank you, Mac. And we may have some comments. I may ask Mac to weigh in on a couple of the sections as we move along, but we're gonna start on Section 4, the budget, and paragraph by paragraph. The committee shall annually determine the district's budget, consistent with the timelines, terms, and requirements of MGL Chapter 71, Section 16B, as amended, and other pertinent provisions of law and consistent with regulations.
Where are you reading, Section?
So he's not gonna read out anything that's crossed out. He's gonna start with what, either the red or the black. Now, remember, red is new language, and black is your current language. Yes.
I mean, is he talking about blue?
I think he means blue.
You mean blue?
Not me, blue.
Blue and black.
Either the black and white version that you have, or...
I get it.
Blue struck out.
Yep.
Red's in.
Okay, just start again. Okay, A, Budget. The committee shall annually determine the district's budget, consistent with the timelines, terms, and requirements of MGL Chapter 71, Section 16B, as amended, and other pertinent provisions of law and consistent with regulations promulgated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, hereinafter sometimes known as DESE. B, Public Hearing and Budget Approval. After conducting a public hearing, consistent with MGL Chapter 71, Section 38, and, as amended, the committee, by a minimum two-thirds vote of all its members, shall annually approve an operating budget for the next fiscal year to maintain and operate the district. After deducting the amount of aid the district is to receive, the balance shall be apportioned among the member towns in accordance with Section 5. The budget will be itemized in such detail as the committee may deem advisable. Such budget shall be adopted not later than 45 days prior to the earliest date on which the business session of the annual town meeting of any member town is to be held, but no event later than March 31st, provided that said budget need not be adopted earlier than February 1st. The amount so apportioned for each member town shall be certified by the district treasurer to the treasurers of the member towns within 30 days from the date on which the annual operating budget is adopted by the committee. The annual budget, as adopted by a two-thirds vote of the committee, shall require the approval of the local appropriating authorities of two-thirds the member towns.
That means both towns. That's the law.
If the committee votes to increase the... Oops, sorry.
I just, in the, under B, the third line down, it says vote of all its members. Does that mean what it says?
Yes. So all members would have to be present?
All members have to be present in order to vote on this budget.
Correct.
And if they're not present, what happens?
No, it doesn't mean that.
What does it mean?
All members present.
Like you're saying, certifying the budget?
Yeah.
It takes two-thirds of the membership. So if you have...
He's talking about the school committee, Steve.
The Ancon School.
Yeah.
You have to have, how many members?
10.
10.
So you have to have seven voting yes, correct?
Yes.
So if you have...
Oh, that's right.
Two-thirds, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So what happens is, if, this becomes a forum issue.
Yeah.
If you have seven people at that meeting, you have a forum.
Yeah.
But if only six vote yes and one votes no, you don't have a budget, because it has to be two-thirds. You have to have seven.
Right.
So if you have 10 here, seven yes, you have three no, you still have a budget.
And if you have seven, and they vote unanimously, you have a budget.
Correct.
Right.
Yes, that's, I misspoke, so they don't all have to be present, but you just need the seven votes.
Seven affirmative votes, regardless of how many are present.
That's right.
If you only have five, you're gonna have five against the others.
When our superintendent has to call every school board member, we better show up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
If the committee votes to increase the district budget after the assessments have been appropriated by the member towns, the committee shall notify the Board of Selectment in each member town within seven days. No increase in the budget shall be effective until the expiration of 45 days after such notification, during which time the Board of Selectment of any member town may call and hold a town meeting for the purpose of expressing disapproval of the increase in the district budget. And if at such meeting, a majority of the vote is present and voting, hereon express disapproval of the budget increase, such increase in the budget shall not be effective, and the committee may prepare another proposal for a budget increase.
So can we, sorry, I don't wanna go back, but we introduced the term Board of Selectment in that section. On the section above, go back to where we just were, if you don't mind?
Yep.
The last line there talks about the annual budget shall require, the last couple of sentences, shall require the approval of the local appropriating authorities. Help me, I just wanna make sure we're clear. That two-thirds that we're talking about, or shall require the approval of the local appropriating authorities of two-thirds of the members' town. What is local appropriating authorities?
Town meeting.
Town meeting, yes.
Thank you. So two-thirds, town meeting, and then we're back to the selectmen. Because I know we, remember, we had this...
Both towns, both towns meetings, though.
Correct.
Right, because our two-thirds is unanimous.
Yeah, we had this...
Yes, I just wanna make sure we're clear. Selectmen roles versus...
Let me just, this is the annual budget.
Correct.
And what happens is, in town meeting, both towns have to vote, and it's a majority vote at the town meeting. The two-thirds requires, the two-thirds, the law says, you know, you have two towns, three, four, or five towns. If you were a three-town district, you have to get two out of the three. If you're a two-town, you can get both. We're just pulling what the law says.
Got it.
Okay.
I have a question on that.
It's confusing.
Another question. Say, say the, all right, are we gonna get into if one town approves it and the other town doesn't?
If you don't, you have a failed budget, and this, the law requires, this is a statement in the law that says what the next step you have to do.
Our next step was to have a huge...
Super town meeting.
Super town meeting between both towns.
The committee, if it fails, and the committee goes back and issues a new budget. If that fails, then you're required to go to a joint town meeting. If that fails, then you're required to do it again. And if you don't have a budget by December 1st, the Department of Education will set a budget for you.
Okay.
And then they also then take fiscal control.
All right, second question on that step. Say, both towns pass the budget at town meeting, but requires that both towns go into an override to pass the budget, and it fails at the override. Where are we in?
You do not have a budget, you, by June 30th, your superintendent has to notify the Department of Education of the budget. They will set what they call a 1/12 budget, where you owe every month that you have authorization to spend money, because your schools will still operate, and then the committee goes through its process, and it's very specific, Chapter 71, 16A or B, I forget which one it is, very prescriptive what you have.
Right, so it does not stop the school year from happening?
Correct.
No, Danny, we went through this once before. You go to the wealth, 1/12 budget, so we can continue to operate. You can't just not open the school.
I just wanted that people watching to understand that if the budget isn't approved, that doesn't mean school does not open.
No.
The Department of Education has the requirement authority, and they have to do with their issue with 1/12 budget, so you can still operate, and then the district will be able to assess the towns based on that budget, the assessment, to operate the towns who are obligated to pay that until that budget actually, either by the towns or by the department.
Okay. Thank you.
So before we move off of, I guess, my comment, so what we're saying is, it just requires a simple majority of both towns, even though the language is saying it should require the approval of two-thirds of the members.
Well, it's two-thirds of the town...
I only have two, I know, but I'm just, I'm just looking at this 10 years from now. Someone's gonna be looking at, I see two-thirds. Duh, there's only two towns in the district.
Well, if you, you know, I know what you, it could be added, where can you get, where is that?
I think you should add.
You're stretching that from the command.
Just don't worry when I start seeing fractions.
You have to...
I think we need to clarify that.
You need to go back.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we need to clarify that.
Why did I say, is that, you could say, you could say both towns have to pass in a simple majority?
I think you should put it in there, absolutely, absolutely put that in there. Yep.
If your budget is adopted with both towns voting at town meeting with a simple majority at the town meeting.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, please add that. Yep.
The two-thirds, right?
Yeah. Everybody get that?
I'll repeat it. The annual budget...
Wait, we have to tell her where to...
Right there, it's gonna go right there.
Right, where?
The annual budget.
Okay.
The annual budget has to be adopted by both towns.
Must be?
Yeah, must be adopted by, no, well, no.
That's all right. It's there, isn't it?
No, must be.
Must be.
Shall be?
Must be adopt, you're right, must be adopted.
By majority voted town meeting.
At, at both town meetings, at both town meetings, by a simple majority, at each town meeting.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, if, why not just change what was after the comma to, you know, must be approved by both town meetings by a simple majority?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, if you just change what was after the comma, I think that would...
That'll cover it.
Yeah.
Want to say it again?
So, if you go back to the original?
I gotta come up with a better way to do this.
Oh, yeah. I think it's only two-thirds when, when a capital project comes in, we have to go out to borrow. I mean, say, say, right, town meeting.
At least we could have done.
Right, yeah. Right, I mean, we gotta make it so, so that people like fifty years from now will say, oh, yeah, that's... Well, it needs to be simple, Danny, if it, if it's not simple, none of us might be here five years, ten years from now. I keep saying, speak this up. No, I mean, on this committee. Oh, yeah. I'm not saying up at Colbrook.
The only thing you have to do, if another town, and then you have to go back, put the two-thirds in, because two out of the three get a budget.
But of course, if another town came into your region, you'd have to redo the regional agreement anyway.
We'd be back to doing like South Shore Votech. Okay.
Let me read that for you.
That's fine.
The annual budget, as adopted by a two-thirds vote of the committee, must be approved by a majority vote at both town meetings.
I thought it was gonna say a simple majority?
A simple majority, I think we should put.
Yeah, simple majority.
The annual budget, as adopted by a two-thirds vote of the committee, must be approved by a simple majority vote at both town meetings. Okay?
It's clear.
Pretty simple.
Section five. Section five, apportionment and payment of costs incurred by the district. A, classification of costs. For the purpose of apportioning assessments by the district to the member towns, costs shall be divided into four categories: operating costs, capital costs, debt, and transportation costs. Transportation costs will be considered operating costs.
We're gonna change that.
The committee shall determine the amount necessary to meet the annual operating, capital, debt, and transportation budgets, and shall allocate such amount among the member towns.
We need, you need to remove from there, transportation costs, we consider operating costs, it's not part of the operating, it needs to be removed. This is under the four categories.
Capital, debt, transportation.
Brilliant.
Yes.
Brilliant.
Yep. And one last thing, also, Michelle, Chris Lynch, in her suggestion to us Friday, did not like the word "budgets," when, at the next to last line, it says, "annual operating, capital, debt, and transportation budgets, and shall be allocated such amount among the member towns," she asked to change the word "budgets" to "needs." So, the school committee is determining the needs of those four categories.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure exactly why that's significant difference.
Because there's only one budget.
She asked that to be changed. I, I think it shouldn't, it's not, shouldn't be a...
I don't agree with you. We don't have more than one budget.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yeah, sir, same purpose.
Right.
B, operating costs. One, operating costs shall include all costs except capital and debt, as defined in Section 5(c), but shall include interest on temporary notes issued by the district in anticipation of revenue.
We need to go back, that's the operating cost, not include...
So, number one should read, based on Chris Lynch's comments, "operating costs shall include all costs except capital, comma, debt, and transportation costs."
Oh, and transportation, okay.
As defined in Section 5(c), and we need to add N and D, 5(c) and D, as D is the transportation. Okay?
Okay.
Is that, okay, again, we're just, that's what Christine does, but I just wanted to clarify that.
She's being very specific, which I think is good.
Yes.
Two, apportionment of operating costs. The operating cost to a member town will equal the minimum local contribution and any other operating costs above the minimum local contributions, referred to in this section as "above minimum contribution." All costs not considered part of operating costs shall be apportioned using the same formulator, formula as operating costs, and will be included in a member town's assessment.
In other words, it's based on enrollment, all of your assessments are based on enrollment.
The aggregate above minimum contribution is arrived at by subtracting from the operating budget the following: Chapter seventy-eight, Chapter seventy-one, transportation aid, the minimum required combined local contributions of all member towns, and other general revenue sources to the district. This formulator is illustrated below. Operating budget, which excludes capital and debt.
Okay, can I just stop you there?
Sure.
So, it excludes capital, debt, and transportation.
Ah, yeah.
You gotta go back up to the next, you'll be able to take out Chapter seventy-one, transportation.
Okay. We need to take out Chapter seventy-one, parentheses, transportation aid.
Oh, the previous.
Yep, thank you.
The aggregate, I'll read that again for you. The aggregate above minimum contribution is arrived at by subtracting from the operating budget the following: Chapter seventy-eight, the minimum required combined local contributions of all member towns, and other general revenue sources to the district.
This...
Right there.
No, go back, go back, right there, stay right there.
Yep, that's it.
Stay in.
Take out Chapter seventy-one, eight, that's gonna come out?
Here?
Yes.
In the formula?
Okay. The other general resources, the district and the E and D, or other types of things that you have, that you use to reduce the assessment. We don't designate, just other sources.
Hey, that's, section again, the operating budget, which excludes capital, debt, and transportation, minus Chapter seventy-eight, as calculated by DESE, minus the minimum required combined local contributions of all member towns, as calculated by DESE, minus other general revenue sources to the district, equals the total above minimum contribution for all member towns.
I have a question, where is Chapter seventy-one, transportation aid, where is that, exactly?
That's, that's, that's based on all students that are transported more than a mile and a half.
Right, well, you have Chapter, right, you have Chapter seventy, transportation? Oh, no, 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 as calculated, okay, I see what you're saying.
Transportation.
Okay, all right.
To determine each member town's proportionate share of the aggregate above minimum contribution, it shall be determined based on the ratio of pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district on October one of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed. The total operating costs assessed to each member town will consist of the member town's minimum local contribution, the town's share of above minimum local contribution, and capital and debt costs, which are not part of the operating costs, to be determined based on the ratio of pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district on October one of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed. The total operating costs assessed to each member town will consist of the member town's minimum local contribution, the town's share of above minimum local contribution, and capital and debt costs, which are not part of the operating costs, to be determined based on the ratio of pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district on October one of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed.
Should that include transportation?
Yeah, you gotta put transportation in there.
You say... Yeah.
Yep. Is that in transportation costs?
Question, on school, school choice, out-of-district students coming in, is that considered just revenue?
Yes, that's...
Classified on a revenue?
That goes into a, a county, does not come into your general stream. You can charge directly to that as you go along, but doesn't come in. The only thing, my only comment to you is that the enrollment of towns, it says, in the towns, enrollment of all towns in the district on October one.
Yeah.
What, are you gonna say that, and I, this is where it's gonna go back, is, what are you using now? Is it the kids right in the building?
Yes, the kids, the kids in the building, it doesn't include anyone out of district.
What about school choice, it's not...
No, school choice is not included in that.
So, you're not using the foundation enrollment?
Nope, just using the total kids in Whitman and the total kids in Hanson.
They're actually in the building.
Yes.
They're here on October one.
That's fine, as long as that...
Well, it also includes outside placement, whether they live in Whitman. Yeah.
Or special education.
Yes.
Then you need to say that. You need to define it very clearly. So, it would be, it would be based on the ratio of pupils enrolled in the buildings, in the school buildings, and out-of-district placements. Now, the question though, I have, is, on the out-of-district placements, on the enrollment, you put that, is that numbered by town that they're in?
Yes.
Okay, is that, whatever you do?
It's all broken down by town, right here.
Okay, that's fine. I, but you have to find it in there, so...
Yeah, that's good.
Did you get that, Michelle?
Yes, I just put it up there, so I didn't want to leave it out of that, with these two additions and...
Right. The pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district, yeah. As long as everybody, the wording, you have to decide, as long as you understand what that means. This is what Chris Lynch, she said she's gonna ask us.
The ratio of pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district and out-of-district placements on October first of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed.
Actually, Chris didn't mention that this time, I don't believe, but when we were working on the South Shore Agreement, she asked to include the phrase "at district expense," so all the students going to school here at district expense, and I think that's to make sure they're not counting school choice in, for example, or something, so...
You mean, out-of-district students at district expense?
No, in district, right?
Oh, just...
And should, and should that be in district?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But take out trouble? In the district.
In all member towns.
In the district, at, what was the language, at what expense, at the district's expense?
At the district's expense.
And out-of-district placement on October one.
Yeah, because in the district, to the casual reader, would include school choice, right?
Exactly.
I, I know, that's why I think we need to clarify it here.
You might need to put the, there are resident students, residents, or something of that nature, that they live in the community, they go to the school.
Resident students in the town and resident students in out-of-district places. Correct, resident.
Okay, let's put, put that in where you think it should be.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, resident in front of member?
Yeah.
Of pupil enrollment in all resident member towns, or resident pupil?
It's really residence.
Resident pupil enrollment?
Resident pupil.
There you go.
Yes. Resident, that's it. Pupil enrollments in all member towns in out-of-district places, that's it. Now, this October one is the certified, do we need to put that in there? Doesn't get certified till December, but the cert, that, that's what it's, okay. That's what October one is.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we had mentioned it or not. We just always give an estimate before, but it's not really real till the certify. You wouldn't use it before that.
Okay, are we...
Clear.
Good with that? That's good, thank you.
Four, special operating costs. Special operating costs include costs unique to a particular town for maintaining programs or services. These costs will be borne by the particular town.
This case, Chris Lynch recommends deleting that. The concern there is that, what if one of your towns says, we'll come up with a million dollars to have a special science program in our elementary school, but you're not, it's not gonna be in the other school, so it's, this kind of is open door to allow something like that to happen, and she feels that that is...
It's either all or nothing.
Not a good precedent. So, I guess, and, and we don't know what, why that was in there, it was in there fifty years ago. So, does anybody feel strongly that we shouldn't eliminate that, those two sentences?
Can we think of a situation where this is ever...
Well, Whitman, Whitman has crossing guards and...
But we don't pay for that.
Right.
But they're paying for that out of their budget.
Right.
And the towns, we do, but the towns... Maybe that's why it was in there.
Yeah.
Could've been crossing guards. Right, yeah. But we don't do that anymore.
I know we call it out separately, but non-mandated busing was...
At one time, crossing guards and... That's why it was in there, I almost...
I bet it wasn't, now that's a town expense.
Yeah, I mean, what, what would we do, right, if, if Hanson decided they weren't gonna pay for non-mandated busing anymore, but Whitman decided they wanted to?
That'd be a problem.
I mean, I know we call it out a little bit differently under transportation, but I feel like the special operating costs kinda give us the flexibility to say, one could do it and the other couldn't.
Yeah, same thing like with non-mandated busing.
What if we had a non, what if we had a non-academic to the term "cost," right? I mean, is the concern that one town is going to provide an academic service to their pupils?
Programs and services.
That's the main issue.
I mean, obviously, we don't know without asking her, but, but...
I would think that she's thinking about, we're a regional school system, and that's what we are, a region, and we're two towns, and both towns should get the same, same ability to do.
Same regional high school.
Yeah, it'd have to be fair and equitable, there's no question about that.
It should go.
But we do have a unique difference...
In transportation.
In transportation.
Well, then, why don't you address that under transportation?
We have, we have, it's very specific under transportation.
Okay, you've already addressed that under transportation?
How about if we get to that, if you don't think it addresses that, we'll come back to this.
Okay.
Section.
Everybody all right with that?
Yeah.
Everybody okay?
Yep, good.
C, capital costs. Capital costs shall include all expenses described in DESE's chart of accounts in the seven thousand function code. Apro, apportionment of capital costs. Capital costs will be apportioned for the ensuing fiscal year as follows: each member town's share of the capital costs shall be determined by computing the ratio which the sum of its enrollments on October one of the fiscal year immediately preceding the year in which the committee votes to include capital cost in the budget bears to the sum of the pupils residing in the member towns and receiving education at the district's expense on October one of the same preceding fiscal year.
Yeah, that's the language that I was mentioning before.
Is that, are we being consistent now on what our October one numbers are?
We're saying residence.
We should define it once up front.
We're gonna have to define it again, same definition.
Every time we use it, we define it? Can we just put it as a definition up top, somewhere that says, like, anytime we refer to enrollment?
Uh, in parentheses, right, further, further referred to as October one, right?
You could say, a suggestion, maybe, refer to, October, refer to the capital, how you did the operating class numbers, if you want.
Yeah, so...
Help us understand what the concern is about when, what, which October first we're talking about?
No, we just don't wanna have to define it every time it further appears in the agreement. So, every time we get to October first, we're gonna have to add that same language over and over and over again.
Well, generally, Chris Lynch likes that, thinks it's less confusing. If someone only looks at one section, you'd rather not have, people have to figure out, go to another place to, I mean, we can do that, we can...
We wanna keep this as simple as possible, we don't want this to be confusing, jumping all over from page to page, because that's gonna be a problem, years when different people are here. I think we wanna keep it as simple as we can.
So, we want the same wording in there?
Simple means redundant.
Yep, yeah, okay. Elementary school, uh, three...
Let's do it right now, where you wanna put it.
Sorry, some of its enrollment, so resident people who are in the town of the district.
Is it this language we're using, or is it the previous language?
That is the previous language.
Previous language.
What'd you say?
That is the previous line, I think she just inserted the previous line.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then, and then you said, the last sentence, you said districts when you read it, but it said, it said regions, so we changed it to districts.
That's fine.
Yes.
In addition to the district's expense, you said regions.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Three, elementary schools and middle schools. Each member town shall be responsible for paying the capital costs as detailed in subsection 3B for, above for its respective elementary school. As relates to the elementary and middle schools in each town, capital costs shall include, but not be limited to, such expenses described above as exceed $5,000.
There you go with it.
I have a question there. I just, as that paragraph is written, it appears that the capital costs are described for both the elementary and middle school, but member towns are only responsible for paying capital costs for the elementary school. It just needs to, it just needs to make that first sentence include the middle school. Right?
Yes, yeah, I was going to...
Elementary and middle.
Otherwise, it reads like, you know, it describes them, but it doesn't require payment.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing is, just if we could have a little bit of history on why that $5,000 threshold is there, do you know?
Yes.
Could you explain that?
Initially, when the regional agreement was amended in 1992, no number was put in. In the late 1990s, there was a movement to have the number be 5,000. It was approved in Whitman, but never approved in Hanson. So, that, that's where it came from.
Okay.
Okay.
So, just to expand on it a little more, too, so this agreement is quite a number of years old, and in my estimation, and I certainly would like to hear more information about it, but capital expenses as defined in the town of Whitman are any expenses that exceed $10,000. So, in my estimation, this should be amended to reflect that definition as it is.
Here's the concern, if you make it too high, Whitman people are paying for Hanson things, and Hanson people are paying for Whitman things. By keeping it at 5,000, I believe you're keeping that to a minimum. The concern with that at 10,000 is that, you're in Whitman, you may be paying for something in the Hanson schools you're not comfortable paying for, and vice versa.
Okay.
So, my sense of it as a superintendent is the 5,000 has worked really well, and there are times where the district has paid for things and not gone to the towns, but mostly, you should pay for what you're going to use, and I think this keeps it pretty clean.
Very good.
Thank you.
What it does, Rick, is it was made to initially, because I went back and spoke to some of the people that were around at the time that thought about it, and what Ruth is saying is 100% true, there's no overlap of, well, we got more, we paid more, we shouldn't have paid less, if you keep it at the minimal, the towns pay for their own, and that way there's no question as to what it is, because it hasn't come up tons of times, but it has come up.
Yeah, and at the 5,000, we really have had very little, I mean, that was, and that was never really voted, people just assumed that's what it was, but ultimately, there should have been no number, because nothing was ever officially approved, but that seems to have worked well with the types of things that need to be done around here, and I think as long as we keep good conversation going, it's going to work okay.
I think that's most important, yeah, thank you.
And the fear of no number is it just becomes an administrative nightmare.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. An article will be presented to the selectmen's office of the town for which capital improvements are requested according to section 6. Four, high school. A high school is owned by the district, therefore, capital...
Wait, wait, here.
Should you be consistent and keep it board of selectmen, not selectmen's office?
Yes.
Is that silly, or is that...
No.
No, I thought, no, we haven't above said Board of Selectmen, sometimes otherwise known as selectmen?
Oh, you wrote that, okay.
I don't know, I will check. Either, we need to fix it, though.
It will be presented to the selectmen's office.
Okay, why don't you put that in and highlight it now, and I'll go back and look.
And then it's presented to us, if it's given to me, I may not give it to the rest. It said, "The article will be presented to the selectmen's office." I don't have a problem with that, because I look at it this way, it's presented to our secretary, then the secretary puts it to town administrator, which goes on to our agenda, which then is presented to us. I think if it's presented, somebody presents something to me, and I forget about it, as a selectman, right? I think if it goes to our main, our office, it's there, you know, it's there.
It would, wouldn't it be presented to the Board of Selectmen at a meeting?
Right, right.
Okay, because if it's presented to the, to the selectmen's office, and it falls behind the filing cabinet, then nobody sees it.
No.
It's happened.
Yeah.
So, I think it should say "to the Board of Selectmen."
Yeah, that's good.
And not "office."
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Basically, it's the same, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, that, we know, we all know what happened then.
I don't want to...
I sent it to the office.
I don't know where it went.
Sorry.
I'm with you.
Four, high school.
I agree, Jim.
A high school is owned by the district, therefore, capital costs for the high school will be apportioned to member towns according to section 5C to above. D, debt. One, debt shall include the payment of principal of and interest on bonds, notes, or other obligations of the district to finance such debt. Two, each member town's share of the debt incurred, including the payment of principal of and interest on bonds, notes, and other obligations of the district to finance such debt, shall be determined by computing the ratio which the sum of its pupil enrollments in the district on October 1 of the fiscal year immediately preceding the year in which the member towns vote to authorize the incurring of the debt bears to the sum of the pupil enrollments of the member towns in the district on October 1 of the same preceding fiscal year, and the ratio shall not be changed during the period in which such bonds, notes, or other obligations are outstanding.
Right, so I think we ought to include, we ought to include the same definition there, about...
For October 1.
October 1.
Yep.
And those two spots?
Yes.
Wait, hold on, this is each, is this town's, is this the town's independent debt? So, like, the building...
Town's share, the portion.
Right, well, the next section talks about district-wide debt, so is, are we just talking about, you know, a school? No?
This is debt by the district.
It's what?
This is debt by the district.
So, this is still district-wide debt?
Yes.
Right, not townwide.
Okay.
I mean, it could be something as simple as Christine has to borrow money, which we haven't had to do in years.
I'm just, yeah, well, I'm just making...
To pay forward, and we incur some debt district-wise.
But incurring the debt for a new school would sit with, there is no, it sits with...
This is on, yeah, but this is all under high school.
All right, perfect, thank you, thank you.
Number four.
We're still under high school.
Number four, subsection...
Thank you, Chris, that's what I wanted to say.
That should actually be, right, we should, should we reletter those to AB?
You have a paragraph here that references pre-K through 12.
It's not under high school, that's my problem. This is, this is just debt, capital cost is C, debt is D.
High school's four.
So, this is debt, this is not capital debt, this is any type of debt?
No.
I mean, if we, for...
It's long-term debt, you're looking at long-term debt.
Well, you go number four, high school.
Chris, that's confusing.
Yeah, I know, it is, it's confusing. High school's on the previous page at number four, and then we hit debt with letter D.
It's a whole different letter, because C is a whole different capital.
C is capital cost.
This is C is capital cost right down to the high school.
Okay, and capital cost of the high school, so debt is debt for the district, it's not...
Right, D is for debt.
Yeah.
That's true. D is for debt.
Okay, Bob, but then, we go from letter C to number three.
Oh, that's funny.
Number four, letter D.
No, it's C, C4.
Got it.
Yeah, it's definitely C4.
Because see all the crossouts, Jim?
Well, you got C...
C1, C2, C3, C4.
Red is new.
Yeah, red is new, so C goes 1, 2, 3, 4?
Yep.
Okay.
And then it goes to D.
There's a lot of cross, got it?
And then it goes to the other new page.
Goes to the other new page.
I'm good.
You're good.
He's got it.
Why isn't transportation T?
It's confusing.
It's from Whitman, right?
Okay, the second part of debt.
Further to the right.
Through the curve, right?
Yeah. You need to indent this further to the right.
It's all good.
Apportionment of district-wide debt shall be determined by computing the ratio member town's pupil enrollment to the total pupil enrollment of all grades from pre-K through 12 of pupils residing in the member towns and receiving education at the region's expense.
You know, if one of your high school English teachers allowed their kids to write sentences this long, they would probably fail them.
Well, hopefully not.
Shouldn't that reference October 1st?
Yes.
Yep, the same language.
Pre-K, pre-K is part of the district, but it's not merely the children, they don't have to send it to...
Add that same phrase in that paragraph, yes.
Bring it up.
I don't know, what do you think?
Speaking as one of those high school English teachers, should we be a little bit more consistent in terms of district and region?
Should just be district.
It should be district.
Should all be district.
All going to be district.
We'll go through, we'll go through and change the district.
Region's expense, shouldn't that be district?
That will be.
Yep.
All regions should become district, yeah.
Can I ask a question? Where it says, "All grades from pre-K through 12," pre-K right now is not mandated, right?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it...
For special education. It's for special education.
Preschool is a special education program.
Okay, okay. No, I was, I was thinking, pre-K is, you know, before kindergarten.
Ours is, what it is, is it's an early intervention program, so students who are part of early intervention go tuition-free, and students who are typical students pay tuition.
Should it be classified, then, as special education, pre-K?
No.
No?
The law requires you to have regular education students participate with the special education students.
Right, they're still our students, yeah.
E, transportation. The district will provide mandated pupil transportation, students who live more than one and a half miles from the school which they attend, this cost will be considered an operating cost.
Okay, we have some changes based on the mandated and non-mandated, so we don't worry about what, what the definition of that is. So, we would like it to read, "The district will provide pupil transportation for students who live more than one and a half miles from the school which they attend," period.
So, you won't take mandated out of there?
Yes.
Shall we put district school, seeing as we're getting...
Does that, um... "The district will provide pupil transportation for students who live more than one and a half miles from the school which they attend."
If the state decides to change the law, does that lock us into having to change the regional agreement, then?
No, because the law will supersede your agreement.
But do we, but do we, then do we have to put something in here that says "as pursuant to whatever the code is?"
That wouldn't be a bad idea, as pursuant to any...
Yes.
Laws or regulations by the Commonwealth, that would, that'd be fine.
And then the sentence, I believe it's in your, what you're looking at, it says, "This cost will be considered an operating cost," obviously, we're deleting that.
Right.
And then, why don't I just re...
Is that the slide right here? As pursuant to laws and regulations by the Commonwealth?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Right, so then the...
No, she's got it, okay.
Okay.
Then the next paragraph...
She's going to delete the operating cost line.
Am I deleting this?
Yep.
What about that word, "district"?
That comes out, too.
It's that floating district.
The transportation, yeah, the floating district.
Yep.
So, the, the next, again, we took out the mandated versus non-mandated language, so we think it should read, "The cost of pupil transportation for students who live less than one and a half miles from the school which they attend will be paid by the town in which the pupil lives. The percentage of the total pupils being transported less than a mile and a half from each member town will be multiplied by the total cost and, and assessed to each member town."
Is that the language?
I'm sorry, it's billed, Chris wants us to say, "will bill to each member town," as opposed to "assess," to, to make it clear that the school district isn't really assessing them, they're just billing them for the cost of that special transportation. So, how, how are we doing there, Michelle? The last sentence is, "The percentage of the total of pupils being transported from each member town will be multiplied by the total cost and billed to each member town."
Now, you got to put something in there, your calc- the calculation is that you take the transportation, regular and special ed, minus the chapter 71, did we do that in the assessment, that's not calculated yet, am I correct?
Second time. Correct, there's no, there hasn't been a calculation.
We have to do a calculation, what?
Bring language back this time with that, or adjust it now?
Put the calculation here for the assessment. So, the assessment would be, you take regular and special ed transportation, minus the chapter 71 reimbursement, and then that difference for the, is then assessed to the member towns for more than a mile and a half, but then the other mile and a half, you are then billing them for those that are, that are transported. But it's the, you got to put special ed and regular together, minus the chapter 71, and then you do it by the pupils, the standard one you've been using, I assume.
So, that should come right under regular, where it says, "District will provide pupil transport..."
Right.
It should come under that, af- right after that, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I have a question on non-mandated busing. If we're busing, we're busing kids, you know, under a mile and a half, non-mandated, do they ha- by legally, that, does there have to be a seat for every child that lives at, well, at that, that point, a mile, less than a mile and a half, even though they may decide to walk?
Yes, well, when she organizes it every year, Diane Naughton has to guarantee to see...
Our biggest hassle, I think, is like Hogg Memorial in Homeland Drive area, the middle school, they can cut through the woods, and they're 20 yards away, yet mandate, non-mandated busing is...
But those are mandated busing.
Huh?
If...
They're walkers from the...
No, they'll...
Are they less than a mile and a half?
As the crow flies, yes, but as legal boundaries go, no.
Right.
So...
Kind of tough, is that...
Those are, no, that's mandated.
Yeah.
Danny, that, there is no road...
Because they're on the other side, there's no road.
Yeah, there's no road.
There was a road, but the town decided to, to put rocks there, now there's a gate there.
Well...
Yeah, but we don't, nobody, that is owned by, there's a piece of property there that's owned, or it was owned by a bank.
Right.
Okay, or FDIC, et cetera. Going back to when Brian O'Connell was town administrator back in 2001, I believe.
Whatever, yeah.
They wanted to give it to us for a dollar. If we own that, then we, now they have a throughway, and it was quote-unquote "legal." We don't own it, though.
Right.
We can go back.
Okay, we never...
You sure that's considered mandated busing?
Yes.
On that area.
There's no legal throughway.
Right, there's no legal throughway, there's no, uh...
See, I was going way back when Lloyd Patrickin was around, that because the town chose to block that off the traffic, that it, then that's what...
But the town doesn't own a piece of that property that's crossed.
Okay.
So, legally, you can't tell a kid to cross a piece of property that we don't own.
Right.
So...
I, yeah, I wasn't too sure of that, thank you.
Could I suggest, we can go back and, with Ruth and Christine, get the wording on that transportation, so it's in there?
For the calculation?
The calculations, I mean, it's very simple what it's going to be, what we just said.
Well, spell it out.
Yeah, you got to spell it out, because then it goes down to, you take a look at F, that tells you what your total assessment will be, so that, I think it's going to be a change there, but that, it's going to be your operating, your transportation, your debt, and your capital.
F, times of payment of apportion, apportioned costs. One, the total assessment to a member town will equal the total of the operating assessment, capital, and debt.
Got to add transportation.
We're going to add transportation.
Rolls it out.
So, we'll say, "Equal the total of the operating, capital, debt, and transportation assessments."
It's assessment.
Assessments.
Assessment.
Plural, yeah. Two. Yep.
No.
He said plural, she thought he said total.
Oh.
Don't let me take out total.
Yeah, no total, just assessments, plural.
Don't say plural.
Two, each member town shall pay to the district in each year its proportionate share, certified as provided in subsection 5B, C, D, and E of the operating, capital, and debt costs. And transportation, we have to add that.
Can we go back to F1 for a second?
Yep.
Should you take out operating assessment and just say, "Operating capital, debt, and transportation assessments"? Wouldn't that be a better way to say it?
That was the way it was read, so yeah, I think we want it.
We did, I think.
No, up there, she, you need, operate, it shouldn't be operating assessment, it should just be operating, right?
Just assessment.
Just the word "assessment."
Yeah.
Yep.
Got it.
Good.
Thanks, Joe. I know we're throwing it, this, you've got it fast.
She's got it.
Hey, let me do two again. Each member town shall pay to the district in each year its proportionate share, certified as provided in subsection 5B, C, D, and E of the operating, capital, debt, and transportation costs. The annual share of each member town shall be paid in equal installments, not later than the first day of August, November, February, and April of each fiscal year.
Do we need to add any language around the payment of non-mandated, or does that just become an agreement?
It's a bill.
It's a bill.
It's an invoice.
But although each town votes whether or not to appropriate the funds, is the school on the hook if the board of selectmen decides not to pay the bill?
How can we not pay the bill?
I don't know.
Shouldn't ask him the question. So after the word "share," if, you wanna say...
Let's say it's voted down at town meeting for non-mandated busing.
Well, then you wouldn't...
Okay, then, that would be, that was brought up.
There'd be no bill then.
Then there'd be no, no mandated busing. We would can't, the town, town meeting canceled non-mandated busing. That was the one issue why we, non-mandated busing used to be assessed by the region. And then like, a lot of times, if we couldn't agree on a budget, they said, "Well, we need to cut the budget, and one of the areas would be non-mandated busing." And, and they said, "It's up to the town whether they want it or not." That's why we took it out of yours and put it into our Article 2, so that town, the townspeople make that decision.
I think the question is, let's say the townspeople do vote for it, but the selectmen say, "Well, we'll, we'll pay you next April."
Can't do that.
I think that's what the question was.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Good.
August.
Once we have this whole thing finalized, and I understand it has to go, um, all the way to the top, but before it gets there, it has to go to the selectmen, before it goes to the town. Am I right?
Before it goes to the...
So if the selectmen approve this, they've approved to pay the bill.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
No, because you could have a different board of selectmen.
Board meeting says we do.
About, you know, five years from now.
But still a binding agreement.
Going out of because the board of selectmen had agreed to this.
Right. Town meeting says we do.
So, so, but do we, does the town choose to, here's the question, right? So, town meeting is appropriating the funds from the tax base. It's not agreeing with the school district that they're gonna pay that. I mean, that's the reason why they've appropriated the funds, right? But where's the contractual obligation of the town to pay the district back for non-mandated busing? I'm asking the question, is it in agreement or not?
I don't wanna confuse the issue, but I, you understand some things on transportation. The law says, okay, K through six, you will, anybody over two miles from the school, you will transport, K through six. Seven through 12, you don't have to, okay? That's the law. However, you now wanna get reimbursed for regional transportation. So you now have to accept that law, that's the law, plus the mile and a half. So that if they are over a mile and a half, you transport them, you get reimbursement 70, 73 percent.
Yeah.
Supposed to be 100, but...
If the elementary proportion of it, and the, you also have bought into the two mile as well, and you can make them walk up to a mile to the stop. So this, it gets a little sticky when you say you're not gonna transport them, because you've got kids, I'm sure they live more than two miles from the elementary schools, and you've got, you've agreed to buy the two-mile limit for the kids here for you to get reimbursement. So I'm not trying to confuse you, but it, it gets pretty sticky when you kinda do that. So there is, there is, you've accepted that law, but you now have created through high school. So anybody over two miles from the high school, you have to transport now. But your key is the mile and a half, and you're talking, how much money, Christine, do you get a year in regional transportation reimbursement monthly?
Well, 665 this year.
Yeah, yeah, so that's where that one, that's why the 1.5 miles. Less than the 1.5, you can decide what you wanna do, but if they live more than two miles, then you got an issue.
I thought the issue was...
Right, but the issue's the less than the 1.5, right? So, so we're agreeing separately with the towns that they're gonna raise and appropriate funds to fund non-mandated transportation, so kids less than a mile and a half.
And that's K6, K12, by the way.
Right, right, so my, but my question is, what stops, what stops the town from saying, "I'm just not gonna pay it"?
Then they don't get a bus fare.
Yeah, that's it.
But if you wind up...
Correct, but the, they've already incur, they've already, we've already incurred the cost, right? From a contractual standpoint.
Yeah, contractually, we already have the cost.
Right.
So if you don't pay it, we have to.
So, the reason why I'm questioning is because there's nowhere in here that it spells out that the town, in, within the, the agreement, we're right, we're now saying, "We're gonna bill you." Where before, we were assessing you.
So do you wanna put something...
We've changed the language, do we need to put, I'm asking the question, I'm not a lawyer, but do we need to put something in that basically says, "Hey, if we go down this path, you're gonna pay the bill," right? This is, this is the legal binding contract between the town and the district.
Okay, you could turn around, and now I'm talking as a selectman now. You can turn around and you can say, "Okay, if the townspeople decided that financially they can't afford non-mandated busing, but you've already agreed to it as a region, then I think there's something in your need, your contract as a region with your transportation, the busing company, to say that it is based on town meeting's approval of non-mandated busing."
You'd never get a contract.
Well, I mean, what are you gonna say? I mean...
We get a three-year con, we get a three-year contract with a two-year extension, so...
But I'm just saying, if town meeting tells us, "No," there's nothing I can do to, you know, and they say, "No, we're not paying that," I can't say, "Well, we're paying it anyway."
But that's not the issue, because you would have the lead time, because you're approving funds for the next fiscal year.
Exactly, and the money's there, right, all right.
What Chris is saying is, even though town meetings appropriated the money, what, and I don't know, what in the world would stop the town from...
Whitman says, "I need the 300,000 for something else."
Well, you know something, then we end up suing the town, I mean, if they say...
But there's no contractual basis for the lawsuit.
Right, there's no contractual basis for the lawsuit, that's my point.
Whereas, we're suing them, because we...
Well, what happens...
We'd have to charge the kids, the families.
I think to Chris's point, what would be, what would be the harm of just putting language in?
Uh, let's put language in here, I don't wanna, that, that, there's three different areas that I think are becoming common.
Look what the state gets away with, you know, 100% on regional transportation. When was the last time you ever saw that?
Yeah, I guess my, my only point is, there should be language in here that basically says once, you know, that the town agrees to, to pay the bill.
Or just, yeah, just the paragraph saying that the town...
You could say the town agrees to pay, well, transport kids living less than a mile and a half.
Right, because I think the way the language was written was just billed, right?
Yeah, I would say...
To each member town and, and billed.
And, and if you looked at it that way, then the town, our, our town, other than...
Well, wait a second. Each member town shall pay to the district in each year its proportionate share, certified as provided in subsections V, B, C, D, and E of the operating, capital, and debt costs. The annual share of each member town shall be paid in equal installments, not later than the first day of August, November, February, and April of each fiscal year.
But that's for the assessment, this is a bill, so do we need to add in?
That's over a mile and a half.
Right, do we need to add in the bill?
What if we said after the word "share," the annual share, parentheses, including non-mandated transportation...
At town meeting, they're going to accept that.
Of each member town shall be paid in equal install, installments.
No, mandated, non-mandated busing is a separate...
You gotta go back to, you gotta go back to E.
No, they're accepting, they're wanting to accept the whole contract.
You gotta go back to E, and put in E if you wanna do it, saying that they, the towns agree to pay that cost, and they will be billed.
Yeah, we put it right in the paragraph above what we're talking about.
And the cost of the, you gotta take out the word "non-mandated," you get less than a mile and a half.
It's out.
And they agree to pay, they agree to provide transportation with students less than a mile and a half, and will pay the bill when receiving.
I think there's still a concern about, again, what if they will pay it in April, and you've had to pay for it all, why wouldn't you wanna put it in, in the place where you're talking about the four annual installments that they were having?
They usually pay, right, in Ju-, August or September, they pay it in full.
The whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
That's the one they pay in full.
But you gotta have something in here that they've agreed that they're going to provide that transportation, if that's what you want, for less than a mile and a half.
Okay, saying that, then...
Upon receipt of the bill. Right, because do we put terms on it? We don't put like net 30, right? So upon receipt of the bill, to be paid by each member po- town, upon receipt of the bill.
What about if we added into the contract, once the contract is entered into with a bus company, the towns will become responsible for the, for the non-mandated busing until such contract is renegotiated or... Because once the contracts are done, you're bidding a contract on total student involvement. If you enter into a contract with a bus company, and then one of the member towns decides to falter out, the bu, you're in breach of contract with the bus company. You're opening a contract up to renegotiate it in a mid-year, if, if this happened at a town meeting.
Unless, okay, unless that is part of your agreement, when you negotiate your contract with it.
Yeah, if you cha, either way, you've, you've got to either change the contract or change the town's...
Because I don't think we should be taking something out of the town meeting.
You obligate the town for more than a year at a time for appropriating money at town meeting.
You can't, you can't, you can't obligate them for more than a year at a time, because every town meeting is voted, right?
Right.
So you, you couldn't put anything in there with the bus contract, you know, that they're obligated annually?
Need to spell this out, I think.
I never thought we'd get into this thing. Well, do you want the towns, I mean, how do the townspeople feel about kids walking a mile and a half to someplace, or do you feel for safety of...
It's always unanimous.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's never a question.
It's never been a question.
Yeah, it's been an open question, it's 300,000 dollars that could pay for a couple of teachers. So it's, it's, it's going to be a question if we continue to be 11th from the bottom.
But you don't pay for non-mandated busing?
The town does.
The language does say...
But it's 300 more thousand dollars the town would have to appropriate to the schools if we weren't appropriating it to non-mandated.
If they couldn't afford it to non-mandated busing, they might want the 300,000 to do something to our library, or our police station, or our police station.
Dan, the, the question is, when we're talking about a budget that may require an override at some point...
Right.
Someday.
Right.
There will be the argument that we shouldn't be paying for non-mandated busing anymore, and that money...
I will probably make that.
Right, and that money should go towards, you know, additional teachers, so...
Or you can charge, you can charge the students that live less than a mile and a half to the bus.
Correct, you could charge instead, and that was something that was brought up previously.
Yes, you can.
Definitely.
For non-mandated, yeah.
Non-mandated. For no, for under the mile and a half, yes.
I went to school, I used to have to pay 25 cents a ride.
There you go. We need a little more than that.
The language...
Yeah, but your mother doesn't drive the rest of the ki, no.
That was bad, whoa!
Did she charge you?
All right, I mean, that's... We've gotta move on this, guys, we've gotta come up with language.
The language does say, "Will be paid by the town in which the pupil lives." Will be paid by the town.
That's what needs to say.
Is that? That isn't good enough?
Yeah, if they agree with it, it says, "Will be paid by the town," it's kind of a moot point.
As the gentleman said, most people don't want, people don't wanna go down that road of putting kids in danger over transportation, I don't care how much money you save or whatever. In the eight years when I was superintendent of a very tight district, they, it was never a question.
So what's the pleasure of the group? Should we think about more language?
I can't hear you, friend, I'm sorry.
I think...
I didn't say anything.
Oh, that's why I couldn't hear you.
I just think you gotta get the word "non-mandated" out of there, and I think you're okay.
But it's out.
It's out, yeah.
I paid you.
Okay.
All right, well, okay. No change? Nothing, no. Go ahead.
It's work.
Yes, if, if, we just added that, now let's, you'll have one more, you'll have another shot at it, you know, 19th of March. Section 6, incurring of debt. The committee may vote to incur debt consistent with the terms and conditions of MGL Chapter 71, Section 16 as amended. At the time of taking action to incur debt, and except for the incurring of temporary debt in anticipation of revenue, the, the committee by two-thirds vote will choose either the process that appears in MGL Chapter 71, Section 16D, or Section 16N as amended. Okay, I, we handed out something about that a couple of months ago, I guess, and the difference is there in Section D would say that, um, you present the debt to the selectmen, they have 60 days, and if they don't, if they choose, say that it looks like a reasonable thing, and they choose not to have a town meeting, then it's approved. N says, automatically, it has to go to a town meeting to approve. So this gives the school committee the choice of the two options of how to, how to handle debt. Not late?
Section, I need to, just to clarify, Section N is a district-wide vote, not town meeting, and the expense is borne by the district on a district-wide vote. You have to pay to have the polls open, they vote, and then the total put together whether it passes or not. Where, eh, where D is, is, they call it, something called "town meeting," it's a town meeting vote.
Well, it's town meeting, and then perhaps, okay, so if it's town meeting, it's capital, let's say it's a debt exclusion, let's say it's building of a new school, town meeting is by majority, not two-thirds, and then you have the, uh, actual vote itself at the ballot.
Well, at town meeting, I believe, if you, if, in other words, you take, the district says that you wanna borrow 20 million dollars to build a school, new school, goes to the town meetings. I believe at the town meeting is, has to be a two-thirds vote.
No, no, it's majority at town meeting. We've been down that road.
It gets between whichever you do. But again, if it's a majority, that, and it has, that, that has to be at D, if the town meeting has to vote, yeah, well, first of all, it's...
So town meeting votes, then it goes to an override.
Is that vote town's vote?
Under N...
Majority?
Is it's...
Still a majority.
It's a majority, but is it, uh, is that the override per se, or does it have to be two separate questions? In other words, one, to authorize, you know, the incurring of the debt, and then the second to fund the monies outside of the levy?
What would have to happen is, okay, let's go back a bit, let's just take, let's take N for a minute, okay? So, N, they vote, they send out to the selectmen. Selectmen say, "No action, go ahead." Another time they had, said, "We wanna go to town meeting, because we're going to need to do a debt exclusion for our town." So it goes to town meeting. Now, in that particular case, if town meeting is going to vote authorization for borrowing, then that becomes a two-thirds, if it's a debt exclusion, not just a simple, at that point. If it's a debt exclusion, town meeting says, "We, yes, we can do a debt exclusion, we're gonna borrow." That has, I believe that's a two-thirds.
I know under small d, and I know we've had our attorneys open up that.
Again, 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 that's, that happens each town, if the towns say yes, then the district can borrow, okay?
Okay.
D, uh, N says, N says, that is, you're gonna have a district-wide vote, majority of the, all the voters together decides it, and then the towns are on the hook to however they're gonna fund it. And in that case, they might have to go to do a debt exclusion.
Okay, then what happens, so they would have, could they have two questions on one ballot?
Sure.
Okay, and let's say, one question passes, the second doesn't.
Well, you'd have to ask your lawyers whichever one of that one. I mean, all they're saying is, is the debt is sent to the towns.
Yeah.
The towns, and the towns then have to deal with how they're going to say yes, and how they're gonna fund it. But then the, and then the, uh, N is that it's a district-wide vote difference, okay? You have a ballot vote.
And it's by the entire district, so it doesn't matter what Whitman approves and Hanson doesn't, it's the majority...
Together.
Super town meeting.
Together.
Right.
Okay, by, simple, you know, one vote, simple majority.
It's a simple majority.
At the ballot box.
At the ballot box. So the towns have to decide how they're going to fund it, whether they now wanna put on for a debt ex, an override, that their debt exclusion, if they want to. So, it just gives you the option of either one.
Well, we're not here to amend the state law, right?
It's all state law, it's...
Right.
That's not the purpose of this meeting.
But you need to, people need to understand that.
No, but, I mean... It's an option that's not typically followed, but it is available.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually, usually D is followed.
Yeah.
Section 7, last paragraph. Not later than seven days after the date on which the committee authorizes the incurring of debt, other than temporary debt in anticipation of revenue to be received from member towns, written, written notice of the date of said authorization, the sum authorized, and the general purpose or purposes for authorizing such debt shall be given to the selectmen in each member town.
That's the best run-on sentence yet.
Thank you.
Williams wrote that one.
So that's four, five, and six. We thought, we would just like to go back and highlight, I think, two or three things that Chris Lynch has pointed out in the other sections that you tentatively approved, uh, last time, that we will, uh, put in writing for you, uh, before the next meeting. Let's see.
Actually, I guess there's nothing between the first three.
First one's withdrawal, dissolution.
Right, so-
What section are we at?
Nine.
Seven amendments.
Section nine?
Section nine, withdrawal.
Yeah, section nine, withdrawal, A limitation. Chris Lynch said he should make sure it is clear to people that if a town were to withdraw from the region, the region is dissolved. So it's not like one town can, can leave the region and the other one is going to continue with the same school committee or part of the school committee, it just, it dissolved. So we have added in the first sentence, the withdrawal of a member town from the district will result in the dissolution of the district.
That makes sense.
And will be affected by the amendment to this agreement. We had this conversation with Ruth and Christine this afternoon. According to your current regional agreement, it appears to us to read that either town can vote to get out of the region, and that will just automatically happen. Matter of fact, there's, there's a word automatically-
What's the K8, not the whole thing, K8, what's in the K8?
Uh, the, the process. This is under withdrawal of elementary and grades pre-kindergarten through eight, yes. You'll see under Section C notification, the last paragraph just above D, it says, the district shall thereupon revert to and include only grades nine through 12 inclusive, and all provisions of this agreement referring to grades pre-kindergarten through 12 inclusive shall also be deemed automatically to be amended to refer to grades nine through 12. Chris Lynch said that that's a pretty unusual thing. So she believes that it shouldn't happen automatically, that if one town votes to get out, it should go through the regular withdrawal process that is spelled out earlier in your agreement. In other words, that there would have to be a new, this agreement, a regional agreement would have to be modified, and it would have to be approved by both towns, and then approved by the commissioner. So I guess we need to know what is the intent of this group. Do you want to have one town to be able to just say, we're getting out, and that happens automatically, or do you want it to have to go through a process, an amendment process that would include both towns? That's the crux of it.
I have a question. Why do we have this language in here at all?
I mean, I would assume because the elementary and middle was a separate amendment, right?
It was, no, it's not, so why do we have the language still?
Yeah, but didn't Pembroke go through this with Silver Lake?
No.
They got out of, they got out of their region, and they became their own school system.
They were never organized pre-k.
Yeah, they were-
Oh, whatever.
But you, you have the curveball that this high school is owned by two towns, basically.
Yeah, but it states in the agreement that either town would still incur debt.
So the, the point here is, you remove that language, and it forces both towns to the table to renegotiate the agreement-
It does.
For the high school.
Right.
Right? Which would make sense, because costs could be different, right? There are things that you may have to renegotiate.
Changes a lot.
Right.
Everything, students, where students are going, is that in the region?
Well, if you added a town first, then it would be a different story. Now you have three towns.
Right, well, if you added a-
So now you need-
Have to modify the agreement completely.
I mean, it feels like that language doesn't really serve any purpose, except to make it easier for somebody to say, I don't want to be part of pre-k eight anymore.
I, I-
Interesting.
I take it out.
Recall, I think, kind of hazily, that that was put in there sort of as a carrot, because people weren't confident, that they wanted to stay in the region over the long haul. I think we're beyond that at this point. I don't see any need for this language, the whole paragraph, I think. I think we, I think we could kick that around a little bit.
So there are three options. One is, keep it the way it is, that one town can automatically dissolve the union, the region. Two is to modify it, so there has to be a process, and three is to remove it. That's up to this committee to-
Well, if you remove it, what does it revert to, right, the, the previous language?
Yeah, there's a withdrawal language above that-
Yeah.
That just talks in general about dissolving the region, and that would revert to that.
Which would then force you to renegotiate the high school agreement, right?
Right.
I would think it'd be a cost associated with the draw.
You have to renegotiate, do the whole regional agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, there wouldn't be a region at that point per se.
Well, it'd be a high school region, right, it'd be a nine to 12.
Like it used to be.
Just be a nine to 12.
But realize, if one K8 goes, the other K8 is also going, so now you're going to be back to where you were, a high school, two K8s, each with their own school committee, they're going to have to have their own su, they have superintendents, they can share the central office, everything else.
Right.
The burden of that cost would probably never see that happen. The discussion has come up.
Of course.
Yep, but, you know, it's all like, we'll just do this, it's easy, but nobody's ever spelled out what the initial cost would be. Some people actually, Steve, thought that might be a cost saving.
You, you've got, number one is, how are you going to divide up assets that you have? And the second piece is, how are you going to divide up your liabilities, of which your big one now is OPEB, and retires, retiring other liabilities coming down the road? How are you going to divide that up by your towns? In fact, what happened when this has come up for an issue with the department, they actually called us in, Mac and I had to go in for a meeting, because this has been a concern from theirs, both on how they do regional agreements, but also withdrawal issues, because the people, some people have been saying just what you said, ah, we just go out, not realizing all the ramifications of that. It's an unbelievable ramification, trying to figure it out, even we've been talking about it and saying, how do you divide up the OPEB? How much is your OPEB liability, roughly?
Over 50.
50 million? So, now, so you see, dividing to three, who gets what? And then you're paying for the retirees, which one do they go with?
Right.
I mean, it's just, yeah.
What's the length of their service?
Yeah.
Where they working? One did work in an elementary school, then went to a middle, and then came here, and then went back, how are you going to do it?
Then it's also the future, where they're going to go. I mean, so, to a certain extent, I wouldn't mind saying to you, just get rid of the withdrawal for the K8. You've got a region and do with the other, if they, if something happens, then you got to go through the amendment process. And by the way, the amendment has to be approved by the department, so again, it's not going to be a willy-nilly thing.
Makes sense.
How do you feel about that, Ruth? About withdrawing that? How do you feel about that?
I can't hear a word you're saying, sorry.
How do you feel about taking that section out that would-
I, I think it would be so cost prohibitive to try to do what this says anyway. Yeah, I mean, I, but I don't live here. I think the people who live here are the ones who really have to decide that.
I think the gentleman over here just said, you've been, think you buy that now, why would you even think about it?
I mean, this was, this was intended as a carrot to make it easy. Something like this should be difficult.
You're exactly right.
Something like this should be difficult.
Very difficult.
It's a divorce.
It should be difficult and costly.
But don't you need to leave that in case another town-
Yeah.
There's a piece for when another town comes in.
Well, if, Rick, if you had to, if, say you were going to add a town, you would totally have to rewrite the regional agreement.
Oh, you'd have to write it in. Then you could incorporate a withdrawal.
Oh, you would not, if you brought another town in, you would have to rewrite the regional agreement in so many different ways, you'd have to almost just take it and go out.
You're already, you're already covered under Section eight, admissions of towns anyway.
Right.
Admissions and withdrawal.
Right, a member town.
So that's covered, Rick, it's in.
Okay.
Okay.
So is there consensus to delete the paragraph, or?
So we're going to take that section out? Sorry, we taking that section out?
Do we want to take a, a vote on this one? Bob, I know we're going to vote on all of the language at the end as well, but-
This is a, maybe something, I mean, I'm awful voting on it, no question, we, we have to do it that way. But I'm thinking, we, we're going to have to put another date in, we're not going to finish this tonight.
Well, we have March 19th as our next meeting.
Yep.
And it'll give everybody a little time to maybe get the feel of what people are watching and thinking, we should, I mean, I'm awful voting.
I mean, or just outline a process, what a process would be.
I think it is up above, right? This was specific only to certain grades.
Yeah, the section before outlines how it would have to work.
I just think the language is self-destructive. There's really no rationale to have it there, no.
I'm just rereading it quickly, yeah.
Yeah, down here, this one here.
Yeah, just here.
What do you want to do?
There's several regional agreements that we've worked on. I think someone mentioned it down there, that when they went from nine to 12 to adding the elementary schools, that was the carrot they put in to make people feel comfortable as, as the thing started, and 20 years later, 40 years later, it's not the same issue.
Right. Can I make a motion? That we delete that paragraph?
Second.
Discussion?
It's delete Section 10. Deleting Section 10.
Not the whole section, is it?
No, not the whole section, just upon the effective date of, this right here, right?
You're deleting A, is that your motion?
Paragraph above D, right, Jim, that's what I'm talking about.
The whole thing is withdrawal of elementary, the whole thing, look on the bottom.
It is that.
Withdrawal of elementary.
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying, okay.
I think it would be the whole section.
The whole section would go.
Yeah, and it'll all, it'll all revert up to the previous section.
Exactly.
How you, you're on any agreement.
Well, there are other processes to do it.
Right.
Yes.
You just don't have the K8.
Everybody understand what-
The whole thing?
The motion was, Mr. Egan's motion? Could you please re-despect your motion, Mr. Egan?
To remove Section 10, withdrawal of elementary grades pre-k to eight.
Is that your motion?
I can't hear what you're saying.
Motion to remove Section 10, withdrawal of elementary grades pre-k to eight.
Yeah.
Entire section.
Yeah.
If we look at Section nine, I think it's-
That's what I'm looking at now, is to see if it covers it.
It covers it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion in the second. Is there any more discussion before we move to the vote? If you look at it, it's kind of-
I want to make sure nine covers apportionment of capital costs after withdrawal.
Yeah, I think it does in the procedural part.
Obligations of withdrawing member towns, C.
It's got OPEB, all of that.
C, letter C.
Yeah, it's all in there, Fred, did you see it?
Yeah.
In the anticipation of revenues, and it comes down to the indebtedness. It even talks about the temporary debt.
Actually, the two sections are almost redundant.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? All those in favor? opposed, abstaining, unanimous, Michelle? Thank you.
Goodbye.
So that's good, we'll make the changes that, that are, actually, thanks to Michelle, we have the changes that you made tonight. We'll add in a few more that Chris has given us. Again, she's, she will reread everything she said in the next few days and talk with us again, certainly before the 19th, and so we should be able to have everything in here that she would like to see, and that what you have done, and hopefully we'll be in good shape on the 19th.
I have on the agenda public participation. Dawn, is there anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay, thank you. Future meeting dates, 6:00 to 7:30 on the 19th of March. The next meeting date after that is the 30th of April, if needed. Hopefully, we won't need it, we can wrap this up on the next date. Any questions about anything we've talked about specifically with this meeting? I'd have to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone.